Let's call meeting order and welcome Albert Hessen, I presume, appreciate you coming. And we're going to ask for Billy Williams to give our indication and after that, Tim would you listen. But brother Billy, we appreciate you coming. I know you're not going to be here in our community much longer and we just thank you so much to take the time to come pray for us. And it's a privilege to have you here and thank you for all you do with our community.
Let us pray. Father, we just come before you throne of grace and Lord, we lift up our town. Father, we lift up our mayor and our city council and all the leadership of the area. Asking you, Lord God, to equip them and to bless them with the know-how and wherewithal to carry on the business of government, dear God. Father, as the council and mayor meet tonight, dear God, Lord, may you guide their decision-making, may you guide the process. And Father, we even pray that you might be glory out of the decisions that are made. Father, may you just have your way. And Lord, we just turn this over to you and this time over to you and thank you for all that you've done for this town and, Lord, thank you that there's going to be more coming. We thank you in advance, Lord, that there's going to be growth and economic growth and good things happen here. And we're just so glad to have been a part of it. Now, we ask you these things, these favors, these blessings in the name of Jesus. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on our agenda tonight is a recommendation to approve resolution number 2013-521. This is a, whereas the housing authority of Hampton has completed a review of architect qualifications submitted for HMGP project for Weston Community Safe Room. And whereas City of Hampton has satisfied all FEMA rules, regulations, guidelines, selecting architects for the project. Therefore, be resolved by the City of Hampton does hereby authorize the selection of the firm Ronald G. Cannon, registered architect, for a contract of $9,225 to provide complete architect services. What this is, is a safe room that's going to be in Weston at the Hampton shorty projects or apartments there in Weston. It's a safe room that, this has been in the works for several months. Actually, the money that was being spent, we will be reimbursed. It's not going to cost the city. It may cost us some interest. Tim, you can tell me if I get misled later or anything, but they're building this thing, this safe room. And actually, we're putting up the money right and then we're going to get reimbursed by the housing authority or by City.
That's the way you cost the projects, $107,000 cents every month, I believe. Everything will be run through the city. FEMA will pay 75%, the housing authority will match 25%. We will have to pay the invoices upfront and then FEMA will reimburse the city. The housing authority wanted you all to know that they have the money, they have their 25%, we're going to have to wait. Maybe a little time on FEMA, but we will be reimbursed for all of it. It may not, the project may not, once we bid it, it may not go for $107,000. She told me that another, in another town, if we, when they did the bids, it came in a lot less, about 40% less, so hopefully ours will. It's just, if it comes in for that full amount, we may have to get a temporary loan, you know.
Line of credit or something?
Until we're reimbursed, but I said we'd be out some interest. Maybe it'll come in lower and we won't even have to do that.
How big is the community, Mr. Brooks?
I don't know speakers.
Yeah, I can remember, we met with Kenneth Brooks and Betty Carter from Housing Authority. Like I say, this project's been running on for several months. It goes back, probably right, we come in office, maybe even before. And I think before with Jenny. So this is, you know, something I think we should approve, of course, because it's not, we're going to get our money back, hopefully we'll be out some interest. But these community safe rooms are very much needed.
So you don't have any of those?
It's pretty good size. I'm going to say a hundred. It's pretty big enough, not that large. Maybe about the one in Indian, it's pretty good size. And there may be another one, I might understand, that the other housing authority, this one's for sure. And it'll be, you know, for the public office, not just residents there, so anybody can go. So is there a recommendation to approve the resolution 2013-51? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Any other discussion? Call in favor, say aye. Tim, what is number three, a recommendation to approve?
This is the NACOC.
The NACOC, okay. This is a resolution to approve the City of Hampton, whereas the City of Hampton has completed a review of project management qualifications submitted to HMGP grant project fund. Whereas the City of Hampton has satisfied all FEMA rules and regulations, guidelines, and selecting project management for the project. Now, for it be resolved by the City of Hampton does hereby authorize the selection of NACOC for a contract price of $5,500 to provide complete project management for the project grant, 1971-305. This also is a part of this project and we will be reimbursed $5,500, is that correct?
Well, what will be their, what will be NACOC's, Paul?
The 55.
I know, but their interest, I mean, they're specific.
Contract.
Yeah, they're handling the paper.
Oh, I see, okay.
It was a lot of, a lot of red name, red name.
Is there a motion to approve this recommendation?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? Is there any other discussion? Call in favor, say aye. Thank you all very much.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before we go any further, I'd like to call executive session.
Okay.
Scott's not here, but...
Is there a reason, good name, character, is that a reason?
Yes. Lawsuit.
Okay.
Lawsuit, a lawsuit, a good name, character.
Kind of a combination, if you really want to know. But probably good name, I guess, covered better.
Is that what you're recording in the minutes, for good name and character?
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make it.
Okay, Tim, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, Tim. Call in favor, say aye. We'll be right back. Let's call meeting back. You know, orders or a motion to go back into session?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Tim, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Is that Francis or did that?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know. Go ahead.
Call in favor, say aye. Thank you. Number four is asked, a recommendation to survey the Hampton Settlements property, the property lines need to be established. I think when the property was bought, probably a couple of years ago, there wasn't really any property lines run, like a surveyor. And we'd like to get that done, so we'll know for sure where the property lines are. So I'd like to ask for a recommendation to do and have that done, so we'll know where our property is joining the Marion County Commission and on the other side of property, the Settlements property.
Tim, do you know that that hadn't been done?
It hasn't been done.
So we bought some property and we didn't even know exactly where the property was.
Do you know there were any circumstances there that prevented or brought up why they did not do that? Well, I'd like a recommendation that we get it lying here and survey and find out where the lines are.
Who, who, who are we going to hire?
You have to, uh...
That's kind of, kind of backwards, but I'll, I'll make a motion.
Your second, Francis, she made it well.
Had it done, been bought, get, find out what we own.
Francis made it, Tim's second.
Okay. And you're going, get, tell Mike Henry.
Is there any other discussion? Call in favor, say aye. Number five is a recommendation to raise Matt Cracker from 1575 per hour to 16 per hour for assistant fire chief. When Tim was appointed chief, a couple of months ago, he recommended shortly after, maybe a week or two after, that Matt be as a assistant chief. But we hadn't done anything since then, and this is the recommendation to move his pay from 1575 to 16, which is what Tim made when he was assistant chief under Baron Wigginton.
Was Tim appointing him as assistant chief?
Tim can ask for an assistant chief. We can approve the thing, or not approve. He, he has made the recommendation that City wants.
Mayor, I just recommend that we wait until six months probation is up on Tim before we make a decision on these. Because it's still under six months, but probation is set.
Well, is there, are you making a motion to wait six months? Well, I, I wait till Tim probation period's on.
However we need to do it. Now, that's just my opinion, but what, what the rest of it, thank you.
How soon you, does anybody know how soon Tim started making this, after, when he was assistant chief?
Right after he was appointed. Right after Tim was appointed assistant under Baron. From my understanding, he was like six months, he went to a quarter hour, it's only a quarter hour more. Like I say, it's okay, whatever you want to do, that's what I'm doing.
And if Tim's probation period is six months, and he doesn't work out, then Matt moves back down the knuckle back to the page that we're making?
Correct.
So basically, we're saying that Tim is on a six-month probation. So that would, tells me that Matt is on a six-month probation also, basically.
Yeah, but Tim didn't stay at his page, that won't do it.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, it's just hard, you know, for somebody on probation to, to, you know, until he gets off probation, become permanent status. I think to make up for recommendations and help through the council, that's it, might say that's just my opinion.
How much time is left on Tim? When did we swear to come in?
Probably been a couple of months.
Was it not the end of March?
March 1st, April, somewhere.
It was the same night as February. Same time, April, Ziegels and, and, and morning this morning, was that the same night?
Same night.
So about...
So I mean, in the, in the...
End of March or 1st of April was it?
Yeah, that was around either March or April, I don't think they did the first of March or something.
Why was he not given the $16 per hour to begin with? Oh, Matt?
Because we voted on the side. We voted on all page. He would only be going until quarter, but when Tim appointed him, or Tim asked him, then the chief, you know, just now being brought up.
So he's just going from being a fireman at 1575 an hour to assistant chief, bringing with him an extra quarter.
Right. He ain't got anything. He's still, he's doing the job without getting any compensation.
Well, I'd like a motion that we, we recommended, that we recommended from 1575 to 16.
Does everybody have the chance to put in for this job, or is this?
Well, I think the chief, if you've got enough confidence in him to do the job, we should allow him to pick his assistant. I mean, I don't like the problem, if our chief or police chief picking his own assistant, you know, we do approve the pay. But supervisor, if we appoint and have confidence in, we should allow them to have their own assistant. That's my opinion. I second that you're getting into micromanaging.
Please say it.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other votes?
Don't y'all vote?
I'm a, what, I'm, I'm yes, you're yes.
Oh, I have stayed. I worked with his wife and mother both all afternoon stay.
So everybody's aye, Tim's a stay. Okay, thank you. Number six, recommendation to increase Mary Frank's hours from 20 hours to 30 hours due to increase in work and place on her employees' retirement system. Mary's been with us several years and does an outstanding job with Star at the library. Star needs help. 20 hours a week for Mary is simply not enough work to do what she needs to do. And yes, you know, with the 10, 10 hours increase, which we would have to start paying her in her retirement when she goes over 20 hours, but it's not going to cost us that much more. It's a lot cheaper than making her full-time from, you know, in 20 to third instead of 20 to 40. But Star needs to help. The library does an outstanding job, never asks for anything. And I, I would recommend that we increase her hours from 20 to 30 hours.
But is this not being more?
It's just managed the same amount of pay.
Same amount of pay.
Same amount of pay.
Which is easy season coming up with all this reading purposes and, Star just can't do it by herself.
There's no way.
And you're building part of the children, special community.
And I wouldn't ask to increase the hours if I didn't honestly think she needs the help. She needs to help. I've looked at this for several months.
You said the same amount of pay you need to pay, the same pay rate?
Same payout per hour.
Per hour.
Right.
How much is that, Martin?
Eight.
Which is not enough, that's what I'm doing.
No, it's not that much.
But she's willing to do this. Got really two dedicated people up there that love the library and people and it's really a plus for Hampton.
Is there a motion to accept this recommendation?
How much?
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Is there any other discussion? Call in favor, say aye. Number seven is recommendation to approve ordinance number 2013-8 to amend ordinance number 2010-13 that the City of Hampton required building permits and set the fees for said permits. What we tried to do is change our building permits a little bit. Some of the commercial may have increased some, but the, the residential, we try to keep as low as possible. There's no permanent fees for putting on a roof on your house. There's no permanent fees. There's several exclusions that retaining walls, concrete work, or sidewalks, driveways, you don't have to get a permit for that. Painting, papering, tiling, carpet work, countertops and similar finish work, you don't have to get a permit for stuff like that. Brief fabricated square in pools less than 24 inches deep. Replacement or construction signs, residential roofing, tree trimming. There's things in other cities where you have to get permits to do this fair.
I'm sorry.
And we tried to make it where it's not so complicated and then I'll keep with you, we'll put this in the paper and show you. But, you know, $50 plus 15 cents a square foot. $50 would be electrical, 15 cents a square foot would be size house that you're building.
Let's cut that in half, I suppose.
It lowered it, it might have been 25 cents, Francis, I can't remember. Might have been more, you know.
I thought it was 100.
It was 100, it did. The electrical part was 100, it's 50. Just trying to make it not a burden. I think people have a misconception, it started costing them $1,000 or $2,000 to build a house, but it don't really cost that much. Could be only, you know, a couple of hundred dollars for a new house when, when we inspect it at least four times to make sure that, at least the electrical component and, you know, foundation is correct.
Have we got qualified inspectors?
We've got inspectors that use a book to, to go everything down, and they are.
Okay, what about the power situation?
We've got a power where we're not going to have to do news many power inspections as much as once was, simply because unless something's been altered, like, you know, new construction would have a power inspection, or if you build on your house, you have to move that power meter, that would be inspected. But other than that, you know, we're not turning around expecting power at a time.
Put down that power, turn on the power.
They will after this.
Without the city saying it's all right to, to turn it on?
They will after this.
So we're, we're not, we're not in the middle?
No.
Going out here and play?
And that's why we waited to get this without the power. They've been in my office twice and we talked about this. We're trying to make, where somebody moves out of the house and that thing, or forces somebody moves back in.
Who's going, who's going to inspect it?
Without the power, they don't have to have inspection, they can turn that power back on.
So we don't have to run out and inspect it like, like we?
No, not like we've been to. That's the whole purpose, we're trying to change some of this.
Okay, if we got a licensed contractor, he's got state contractor license, he's got city license. Why does he have to have architect plans to build that house? Why do we require that if he's got a state license, contractor license, and city license to build that? Why are we putting that burden on the homeowner or whatever to buy extra plans to build that house?
Because that's part of the ordinance.
Well, I think that needs to be brought out, don't worry about it.
Just because they're contractors, don't mean they know how, know the structural aspects of the house.
Well, I mean, we, we've got people that, you know, that tell, tell me, they, they don't want to do this inspection, some of our people. They don't want to get involved in.
And our tenants that do inspections don't want to get it?
I just talked to one, I don't know who the other, who the other one is.
Tim, we're trying to get it, where they don't have to do this, get inspection, that's the whole point of the law.
But I, what I'm talking about is, we're putting a lot of burden on a lot of people here. Now, some people, it says in here, if you got less than social security, that's all you get and you don't have to pay anything.
That's right.
But if you get $200 from us somewhere over here, you don't have to pay for a little retirement, you don't, you don't have to pay. I feel like this, when it was adopted, it's hurt Hampton from the get-go. I know one contractor said he does some work in Hampton and bought supplies out of the S and H. I asked him about some work, he said he wouldn't even come, come into Hampton and do no work. And he's been building houses for years.
Well, I think a lot of us misconceptions, Tim, and perception, that's why we're trying to get it, make it easier. We're not trying to make it harder. Our whole goal is to make it easier. And that's the whole point of changing this, anything, is to make it easier for residents, contractors to build their own house.
Well, it goes back to what I was unwilling now from NACOC said, that it was done a little bit and there's no reflection on anybody. It was just trying to get something in place for several different reasons and some of it might have been done in just a little haze and trying to simplify it a little more and we want everybody to be happy and content and have something workable here. I just, I just feel like that you've got to have, for protection, I mean, there's a liability here.
Well, I mean, who's been enforcing the, the one we had, nobody?
Yeah, we've had people go and inspect it all the time.
Well, I mean, people building in residential places and, and this.
But those things might come over those things that don't require an inspection. You don't think?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Tim, we don't have a perfect system.
Somebody...
And we probably never will have.
And I, I agree with that, but this right here is, in my opinion, it's hurt, hurt the city big time. And I know it's, we're, they even charge in churches, they add on so many, many fees. Are, you know, are we that strapped for money that we just got to charge, charge everybody?
No. The money's not the issue. It's not about money. We don't lack enough money for nobody to do this full-time. And we're not ever going to. I mean, I'm not interested in making a full-time job out of rebuilding estate. We just don't think we don't have the money. You'd have to charge some people so much money, it'd be awful. And that's what we're trying to do, is make it simpler, you know, other than just throw it in the trash and not do nothing. We could do that.
If I put a roof on my building up there, this is all residential right now, but it's a store building, I don't have, I don't have to pay for them.
Go ahead, little man. We're working on getting that rezoned and getting, you know, best thing.
I don't care if you rezoned it or not, I mean, that, that's, that's the problem. When it was zoned, and I'm like Francis, I'm not throwing off on nobody, but when you once let something happen, you vote yourself for a lawsuit. And there, and, and we've done got some, I'm sure, we had to go into executive session on some stuff.
You're saying that the city's been sued? You're saying the city's been sued?
Fix will be. Probably done got one.
I ain't got one.
I hadn't seen it, I heard about it.
I haven't heard, I haven't seen it.
But I, I just, I just, I just think, you know, we're rural Marion County, Alabama.
We are, I agree, 100%.
And we're not, we're not...
We're not hoover, we're Mountain Brook, you know, we're not going to be. I don't want to be. I like being Hampton, I like being what we are.
If a fellow wants to build a shop.
But what we're trying to do is make something fit us, not fit Mountain Brook. And that's what we're trying to do with the zone and trying to protect the property owners, protect the city and have a plan to go forward for the next five, 20 years that you at least have something implemented to bring us, you know, a little closer to where we could be, not, not just letting anything go.
I believe the agency administration, when this first came about, I think their intentions were very honorable. I think they were interested in their city and seeing if things were done right. I'm not, we're not trying to scam anybody, we're not trying to take advantage of anybody. I think probably some of it could be tweaked and Nathan, who, Nathan Cox, knows, he's knows, it's like a Bible to him, he knows everything about it. And he's trying to help us simplify. I don't think anybody would be disagreeing with that, but for the future, I strongly feel like. And it's just my opinion, that we need to keep something in watch.
So we, if somebody want to go over to wherever they sell pools, I think they sell some in Woodville, I don't know if anybody in Hampton sells these pools that you put up above ground, I've got to come down here and pay $100 if it's deeper than 24 inches?
Yes, that's an electrical inspection.
But 24 inches and above?
Whatever's in that order. Whatever's in that order.
I did toss it up, but I couldn't find it there a while ago. So if you got a 30-inch pool, above ground pool, you, you got to come down here.
Well, if we know about it, we might not know about it.
This, uh, number seven is about simplifying and lowering fees. Right?
That's right.
Well, uh, we're through discussing it for what?
I'm done.
I, I'll make a motion, uh, for the time being, that because it is going to be worked on further, isn't it with?
This is part of your work in progress. Everything else seems to be.
And he just wanted to take some of the responsibility off of the city regarding the power situation.
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve this ordinance.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Thank you very much. The regs, recommendations to hire Daniel Ryan Peoples as part-time temporary worker for the water department with a hourly rate, hourly rate pay of seven twenty-five. Effective hire date will be May twenty-fourth of two thousand thirteen. This would be a high school, a worker, uh, that Rodney gets, usually gets one in summer to help mow and weed around all of her old wells, to gas, main water wells, and does a lot of mowing weed in the summer. Temporary job, won't be, just be through the summer help. This is someone he picked.
This is a student.
It is a student, yes ma'am.
It would just be his summer.
Yeah, this would be.
I always say what, say, doing your senior, thinking it's a chief.
And he's parent.
Is there a motion to hire this part-time worker? I'll make a motion. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Is any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Number nine is recommendations to hire Ashlynn Watson, that's part-time temporary worker at the Regret Ration Center with hourly rate pay of seven twenty-five, effective hire date, May twenty-fourth of two thousand thirteen. This is also a, uh, part-time worker that can work. Well, he had one deleted, Jan, so this would be replacing another one.
Yes.
Okay. Any, Fox, Fox, we had it.
Two or three of them graduated and something there.
Just replaced two of us moving on.
Two of them left, so we replaced one already, this will replace the other.
Replaced a, uh, young man the other day, this big girl that replaced.
And they, how much did they work, wait, twelve hours?
They only worked ten, it's like nineteen hours?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, fifteen.
Do they have to lock up open there?
They do on the weekends.
I'll let you handle that reform.
Is there a motion to hire Ashlynn?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Greg, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Liam, is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, before we go adjourn, I've got a few announcements to make, and I think, it's possible, do you have something you wanna say?
Yes. I think I talked to you privately, but I wanna thank all of y'all. You listen to the citizens. Especially me, I've always opened my mouth, but I thank y'all so much. You know, you are our council, this is our city, we deserve to be heard. So I wanna compliment all of you, you don't used to get that, but thank you so much. I understand if I'd have been here, thought of council meetings, it'd probably had to all be jail. I'm very vocal, but I, I also don't curse, so that's a plus, but thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anything? Chief, can you give something on your officers that send school, ones that still dog training and ones on, and two are still in academy?
Yes, I still got two in the academy, uh, I think they got about eight weeks left now, and then my dog will be on the street this weekend.
Is that finished this Friday?
In school, right, yes.
And that's going well?
Yes.
Two students, two, two officers in school is doing well?
Doing very well.
Very good.
Yes. We'll hopefully by the middle of July, I'll have a full complement.
You'll have full staff then?
Yes, sir.
Good day. Okay. Couple of announcements, the fourth annual Crest Appreciation Day will be June, uh, the first on Saturday. This is gonna be uptown from one o'clock to approximately nine P M. or later. Uh, if it rains, it'd be moved to June the fifteenth, but this is a, a very good thing. We hope that people will come uptown. Uh, it's gonna be lots of Hampton bucks given away during that night, a lot of music, and, uh, a lot of things going on in the city that day, so y'all should, be sure to come uptown and, uh, support these merchants. And support the bands that are coming, bring your wine share, and try to just enjoy, hopefully we'll have good weather that night. Uh, library's summer breeding program, dig into reading in Clyde Neeks Library this summer. Uh, June fourth, the Quain Science Center, June eleventh, Indian Arts Artifacts with Danny Hudson. June eighteenth, eleven A M. Skid Cane Magician. And June twenty-fifth, eleven A M. In the Program, certificates and gifts. This is all for the library summer program. That's what I'm saying, they have so much going on, we need to support our library as much as we can. And also on the eighteenth, we'll still remind you about the city of this, uh, state of the city event. Just the information fair for you to see what's going on in our city. With all the projects we've got going, and, uh, hopefully we'll have good news and stuff, hopefully by then. But just be a chance for you to come and see what's happening at the Battle Center on the evening. Any council members say?
I just wanna thank everybody who waited to come out. We had our fifteen year, uh, open house anniversary deal Saturday, just wanna thank everybody for coming out for you. Luckily, I just had a good crowd and, uh, appreciate everybody. I had motor four six storm. I figured everybody needed that, so.
Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Tim. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Tim. All in favor, say aye. Thank y'all for it.